Are we ready? Are we live? Okay, all right. Good morning, everybody. Happy last day of February. Got a few commissioners, one's remote and one is on his way. So anyway, we will start with the agenda.
All right. Thank you, Vice Chair. Good morning, Commissioner. Nicole, can you talk about good county good news to start the meeting on Wednesday?
Yes, sir. We will have emergency management here. March 3rd through the 7th is severe weather awareness week, so they will go through that. A reminder for now and also coming on Wednesday is the statewide tornado drill at 10:00 a.m. And then to everybody's excitement, daylight savings time is next Saturday, Sunday, and we will have some tips from Fire District One, and that's all we have.
And we just had severe weather the last three weeks.
We were talking. Yes, yes, we did.
Thank you.
Hey, to start the regular meeting off with, we have a series of appointments. Item D is a Juvenile Corrections Advisory Board appointment. And I think it's a, it's a, the body of the commission appointment. E and F are both appointments. Commissioner Howes not here yet, but it's for his district collaboration board, his newly revised board. Best, I think we could tell us 14 of them. Item E is designated by a position. And then I think maybe item F is his at large, so. And Justin may choose to dishandle those together during, during the meeting. On, on new business, item G is issuance of sale and delivery of GO bonds that Lindsay will cover. Item H is a zone changer request, and I think you were briefed on this within the last couple of days. It's a limited commercial and SF 20 area being a zone change to a PF3 two-family residential. They want to build duplexes up. It's on 55 acres or so. Any questions on that? I don't see Scott here, but he might be on.
I think he's almost.
Come back and ask him. He is. Sure, Hal. Welcome. Go ahead. To be in a hurry here, but we're on item H.
Correct.
Which is in your district. I didn't, I think we've all been briefed on it, but if you had any comments or want to say anything.
I actually think it's, it's in Commissioner Bluebond's district.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I, I will say, I'm kind of excited to see that, I guess it's the first time I've ever seen anybody from out of the area come in here and do a development. So I think that's exciting news.
Item I is a utility easement that Andrew Dilts will present. I know Commissioner Meister is very familiar with this, but essentially in the area that we own, what we call Northeast Sedgwick County Park, there is a private entity that owns some land there and they want to build a house. And to get to the house, they need an easement across county property. So that Andrew will present that. He'll give you the history on how this developed and, and talk that through with you. And then Board of Bids and Contracts is item J. We have a very short consent list. Item K is a series of easements on the Ridge Road project between 69th and 85th. These are temporary construction easements. The total fiscal cost to the county is $28,410. And Lynn is here if there's questions on that. Item L is something you'll begin to see a little bit more of. This is a application for a large event to happen at one of the county properties. This one happens to be at Sedgwick County Park, right, Tanya? It's the 31st Annual Easter Sun Run. We've done these historically because the event is so large that now we want to put it on new business. So the commission is aware of this. They've been, I know, working with the sheriff and public safety to make sure this goes safely and but it is, you'll see these on new business items as they come forward in the future due to the new policy. Item N M, I'm sorry, M is in Mary, is an agreement with Srebel Paulsy Research Foundation for Wheelchair and Posture Clinic Services. This is a historical relationship we have with this group. Tim can talk about that, but it is a renewal and a continuation of the same type of grant management we've done in the past with this group to provide needed services for our ADD population. And then I'm going to have Tim talk about item N because it's, it's an affiliation agreement. There's a little bit of a change in the state of Kansas. I think we have talked this through with some of you in the past, but I wanted him to just kind of talk on that a little bit.
So Kdad's tends to contract with one of the 11 AAAs across the state to be the primary contractor. And then that contracted subs with all the rest of us to do the local service delivery. So in this instance, it's for administrative case management. Kdad's had led an RFP back in September. They haven't resolved it yet, so they extended the contract through March 31st. And so this covers the time period from the end of the original extension in December through the end of this, the end of March.
And the rest of the agenda is routine business. Is there any questions for any staff on agenda? If not, we have some legislative platform items to talk about. And there, and there is just two executive sessions. Two different topics.
And no fire agenda.
No fire agenda.
Any questions about the agenda before we move on to legislative? Chairman Beatty, I know you're on. Any questions?
All right, let's move on. Okay. All right, Tanya, you want to hit us on legislative update and lots happening up there?
Yep. So there are four bills that we want to talk about this morning. We have House Bill 2343, Senate Bill 24242. Justin is going to cover those. We have House Bill 2377, that's our sales tax bill, and Tom and Lindsay will cover that. And then Senate Bill 273, which is our election bill. I'm going to cover that real quickly. So I have the testimony that's in front of you that is, that's being sent up and has been sent up this morning by our election commissioner, Laura Rainwater. This is on our legislative platform, and this is rather interesting. What they've done with this is, my understanding is they are basically going to take House Bill 2022, they're going to strip that. And basically what was Senate Bill 273, which is our elections bill, that's going to go into House Bill 2022. So that's why there's a change in that number. But it is still what we've asked for our legislative platform, and that's just to hold those special election dates in March and November, and I think in August. And so this is the testimony that she submitted. Laura is also going to be there on Monday in person to testify in, in person as well. And I know that she has talked to all the other election commissioners in the state, and they're very supportive. And she believes that they will also be there, other in person, and hopefully on Zoom as well to be there in support. So just wanted to mention that, and I'll stop there if you have any questions or want to speak further on that.
I think we're all in agreement there. This is a good, good move.
Okay.
Is it favorable? Do we, are we hearing favorable things on it?
I, I don't know that I've heard specifically, but I know she's talked to Secretary of State. He's behind this. I haven't heard, you know, either way from the legislature on, on this so far.
Well, good luck to Laura on that testimony. Will you all write with this letter, everybody?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, the next piece is House Bill 2377. So that is our sales tax bill. What I, what you have before you here is the bill that was put together by Tom Henry. There is a slight modification that we have given to Jason to then submit to Chair Adam Smith. I'll let Tom Henry just speak to that. And then I know that Tom kind of wants to summarize what's transpired in the last couple of days. And then Lindsay might also want to provide some additional information.
Tom, you want to go first? You want me to go? Okay. Okay, so commissioners, we've had this topic discussion for a couple of years now. When, when the commission lowered the mill levy last year, we talked about publicly that it costs us on the sales tax side too, based on the way the state mathematic is for a computation of sales tax distribution to cities and counties. So we went through the same thing again this year. And, and this year we crafted a House Bill 2377 as a mechanism to try to ensure that communities, governments that voluntarily take a mill levy cut do not, it doesn't cost them on the sales tax end too. So that, that's our attempt. That's what we're trying to go through and do. So Lindsay and Tom and then staff worked together and we created this bill, which essentially takes the levy, there's two parts of that mathematic. One is population and one is calculation of the levy rate. We removed the levy rate portion of that and, and replaced it with assessed value, which we think is a more fair way to distribute that. Unfortunately, when we did the modeling of that, it's a very fast shift on how some of that sales tax is distributed. And in short, hurts cities within the county. And this is just Sedgwick County, not, not knowing what it does to the other 104 counties. In Sedgwick County, it hurts some of our cities. It helps a very few. And then, of course, it makes the county whole. But the numbers on that looked too drastic to, to do in one bite. So what Tom's going to talk through today is a pivot on this bill to where we're going to ask for a freeze on that half of the algorithm this year to where if the commission decides to lower mills, it will not cost us sales tax or any government. Any government that chooses to lower its mill levy will not be penalized with an additional sales tax removal as well. So that's number one. And then number two is, we want to actually ask the state to formulate a committee that would look at this more long-term to fix this over the course of the next few years. So that is the second ask. So I'll let Tom, I mean, I'd have articulated very well on that, but I'll let you go ahead and talk about what you drafted.
Hey, Tom, Senator Assistant County Counselor. Tom Stoltz, the good guy covering. So the amended draft of the bill right now essentially calls for that freeze for a year. And what it would do is essentially the table would calculate ratio for that specific cap with the calculation again. So the population changes would still affect change for that formula. Whereas the current property tax levy portion of that will be put off rates of it, we would be penalized. It gives time for the KAC to gather and study together to analyze, hey, maybe there's a better solution with this or.
But, but that would give the KAC and league of municipalities a chance to look at other possible solutions, or there's been discussed maybe a five-year rollout of our proposed solution instead. So. So, yeah, that's.
I'll just say. Is that referenced in this rewrite?
So it's based on how you rewrite bills, it's section one on that first page, it's subsection A1. At the very end, there's a portion there that's in italics that creates the freeze. It says, except that the apportionment pursuant to this provision shall not change between July 1, 2025 and December 31st, 2026.
See that, but we're, we're requesting a.
The, the request for the study group is outside of the bill. There's no bill language to address that specific.
Appropriate? Is that procedurally good in your history, Commissioner?
Yeah, I think that's, that part of it's fine. I, I would like to go a little bit further with this. So I think we ought to, in our amendment, you know, understand the study group doing their thing, but I think it's going to be hard to pass this without some type of a proposal for softening the transition. I did a bunch of math on this last night, and I, I think the five-year transition essentially holds the cities harmless. What it, what it does is it lowers their increase. So they're not really going down in sales tax revenue. It just simply reduces their increase each year for a number of years, which in my opinion, they're still trending upward based on sales tax growth. In the same, same time, they're, they're increasing their, their assessed value through construction and and through annexation for cities. And so I think that the formula benefits them over time. But just to soften this, the over five years, actually, it appears even for the city, this got the greatest impact right now. From my, from my calculations, it looks to me like it softens it to the point they don't actually go down in numbers at all. So I think the five-year transition is imperative to making this pass. So I'd like to see that in our amendment. And if this, if the council or this study group wants to change it something different, that's fine. But I think we ought to at least have a proposal that basically holds harmless to cities so they don't actually lose money. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I get that. And I think there was a discussion about that yesterday with Jason.
Oh, yeah. Tom, we haven't, or Wes, Justin, we haven't had a chance to catch up on the, on the Jason reference.
Yeah, I should have mentioned that when I was giving the overview. We did talk with Mr. Watkins yesterday, late in the day. He, I think he thinks this is good strategy. One of the, the technical things that he brought up was that to form a committee that, which is the second half of our ask here, that Senator Masterson and Representative Hawkins, as leaders of chambers, would have to be consulted on that and approve of that. So he was going to talk with them about that and what we're trying to accomplish. And also, he understood, we talked to him about the five-in phase in, he understood that. He wanted to talk with Adam Smith about that in person. So I think that he will talk through in addition to what we're handing him written on this bill. He will be talking through with various elected officials on the state to, to try to get us where we need to go here. There might.
And I may, I may supplement, Commissioner Meister, what Tom said there. And I think that the concern, and I completely understand what Commissioner Howes is saying, and I think there's a lot of some validity there. But I think some of Jason's concern was that if you put the five-year in the bill, that makes it harder to get passage because some of these cities are still going to be opposed to it pretty strongly. Whereas, you know, that's something that could always be considered later. So I think he thought it would be easier to achieve this if it's just a freeze at this point in time and an analysis with maybe the five-year piece. If that's the route that it would go to be determined later after, after more review. And, and just to expand a little bit more on that, I think there was a discussion too about doing both the freeze and the five, or five-year plan with Jason Watkins. And he, at that point, he was, he kind of questioned what the point of the freeze was, if you're going to do a freeze.
Okay, well, I, I tend to agree with that guidance from Mr. Watkins, if that's agreeable.
Just freezing for one year, that means we have to come back and deal with this.
Right.
Yeah.
Next year.
And to the extent there's no solution come up, that is come up with by that committee, I think the proposed action would be to do the five-year next year as a legislative item.
I guess I, I have some questions, and I think that the reality of the freeze is probably going to help Sedgwick County this year and may be viewed as hurting cities this year because they would stand, that they would stand to have an increase. Again, because we're likely to have a decrease, they're going to have an increase. I'm not sure they're going to love that anymore than. I mean, I think the freeze is problematic anyway, but.
Yeah, could be. We could be fighting an uphill battle anyway, but I think we're trying to.
I don't know what the best answer is. I think, I think what you guys are proposing, if there's a consensus to that, that's fine. I don't know that I mind a discussion about the five years, because you know, mathematically, it looks to me like it actually is a solution that makes sense holistically. So people say, well, where's this going? Well, we have an answer to that question. We think this is a good solution. You know, overall, I've, even people, I don't want to name names, but I talked to some people in the City of Derby yesterday that you know, if you just look philosophically or fundamentally, does, you know, what's the purpose of the sales tax? It's, it's reduction of property tax. And if, and if you argue, you know, if you reduce our property taxes, don't you think we should not be, you know, hurt on the sales tax? They agree. So we agree in fundamentals and the principles behind this, we agree. The, the problem is, when you look at the actual numbers, they're just focused on the fact that, you know, if they lose a dollar, they're, they're a no. I think if you look at this long-term, over the next 10 or 20 years, I think that any growing city is going to benefit from this proposal over time. So you have to look at this in the long term, not just one year or not just a couple of years. I think at the end of the day, project it way out, and we can, we can project their, you know, every one of these trend lines has a way to, to extend them out and see what happens over time. I think at the end of the day, the five years answers the question, well, where is this going? I would, I would rather personally write the law that says the five-year transition is, is as aggressive as we'll ever get. And even that is subject to change based on this committee. Committee gives up, so better idea, they can wipe that and do something better. But to me, it answers the question. And if, if you can show that no city is actually going to see a reduction in sales tax revenue. And now, again, I base that on the fact that they, there's growth in sales tax revenue and they have a assessed value growth. Those two factors play into this. And so I don't think the dollars are actually going to go down at all. I think the dollars continues to climb. So to me, that's, that's the one thing they don't want to see is a reduction in their budgets. Or I don't know, I'm not sure we aren't making any sense here. I just don't know that the freeze alone is going to be enough to sell this.
But well, appreciate your input over the course of this discussion, the last two weeks and your testimony up there. And helping us battle through some of the confusion that I think you witnessed up there too, that even the provisor was having trouble explaining and so.
But the cities, you know, the cities are, have a loud voice and, and every city has been hurt by this. They're, they're getting the attention of the legislators. But if you just talk about philosophically, what's, what are we trying to do here? The committee overall was very supportive of what we're trying to do here. So that to me, I think it was a win. I just think that nobody wants to see the cities hurt in the process.
I agree. All right, I have a couple of questions on your write-up. So you make reference to Riley, Johnson, Montgomery County. I mean, I.
So I, all of that is what's currently in the statute. The part that I read in italics is the recommended change. Everything else was already there.
All right.
So essentially what this is doing is it's repealing the existing statute and replacing it with this write-up. And the only change from what's currently in statute to what this bill would create if adopted is that part in italics in that subsection A1.
Because I know there were some comments in Commissioner Howes' testimony about Wolf Creek and other counties. And so I assume that Johnson and.
Yeah, all of that is unchanged from what law currently is.
My second question is, like right in the middle of your first page, and this is just technical, prescribed in subsection small a. Is small a the very top, the very first? I don't see a small a.
It is. And again, that's, that's what's currently in the statute for.
That's.
KSA 12-192. If you go look and read it now, that, that language is already there.
Okay, okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments? Commissioner Beatty, I know you're busy, but do you have anything to add? Well, it's, thank you, Tom, for all your work and, and everybody on this. Oh, and Lindsay, were you going to comment or not? Okay.
All right, any other items, Tanya?
Yeah, there's two more bills, and I'll let Justin speak to those. It's House Bill 2343, which is the No Impact Home-Based Business Bill. And then I know he wants to speak on Senate Bill 24, excuse me, 242, which is a continued seed fee agreements with law firms. So Justin, I'll let you take it over.
Sure. Thank you, Tanya. Justin Wagner, County Counselor. And would, would commissioners like copies of these bills? I can pass them around if you would like, or if not, that's, that's fine. I didn't want to comment on both of these. And, and each legislative session, there's a number of bills that could impact local controls, essentially county home rule powers and things like that. As staff, we don't run all of those by you because there's probably several dozen each legislative session. But when there are more significant bills that would have a pretty big change in the status quo, we do want to bring those to your attention. Both these kind of fit into that category. House Bill 2343, this bill, the subject matter of it's the regulation of home-based businesses. And this is where it's pretty self-explanatory, where somebody's operating a business out of their home. And Sedgwick County, the unincorporated area, we have in our zoning code, some, what I would characterize as pretty balanced and common sense regulation of this, where a lot of things are allowed that are not impactful by right. You wouldn't even have to do a zoning action. If then, if a rural home occupation is more impactful to your neighbors, may require some limitations on what you can do or a rezoning if it's going to cause more impact to them. We've had these provisions in place, more or less the way they are today for, I think, about the past 10 or 15 years. And so this is an area that, that we do currently address in our zoning code. The way House Bill 2343 is crafted is that it would really take this decision-making power away from cities and counties entirely and impose what I would refer to as a one-size-fits-all approach in the unincorporated areas. What's proposed in this bill is that a rural, no-impact home-based business that would be permitted by right would be broad enough to allow nearly any commercial use of a residential property in the unincorporated areas of Sedgwick County. The only limitations on that would be for if a home-based business would allow the, would not be allowed to sell legal drugs, liquor, run a sober living home, or operate a sexually oriented business. So industrial uses, large event centers, any other number of commercial uses would be allowed by right out of folks' homes. And the counties wouldn't be able to control that as a matter of zoning code. That's a pretty drastic change from what our zoning code allows now. There are other aspects of this bill. I won't get into a lot of detail, but for, they would address enforcement. There's, there's provisions that allow cities more power, but even those provisions don't really represent a reasonable middle ground. There's a lot of undefined terms and kind of vague references to if it unreasonably increases traffic, which I wouldn't know how to quantify that, that I think could be problematic. But again, those are, those are for the cities. But I guess what I'm saying is even, even those provisions I have concerns about, even if they apply in the unincorporated area. The bill has been approved by the House 74 to 49. That's not a veto-proof majority. We don't know, I mean, at this point, it, it's going to go to a Senate committee from there. We don't know where it will go exactly, you know, at this point, but obviously to get approval, the House would have to go to a Senate committee and then get Senate committee of the, the whole. There could be the possibility the governor could veto it. If it is approved by both, if the Senate would end up approving it. We didn't know if the board had any interest in taking any positions on this. There's not currently a hearing set in front of the Senate committee that would take this up. And I'd be having to stand for any questions on what this would do if there's anything that, that, you know, the board would want to do on it in particular.
Thank you for the summary of what we've gone through the last couple of years, especially with large venues and events and some of the zoning cases where people are trying to run commercial businesses out of their residence in the in the unincorporated area. I think the way you described the bill is something that I think we do need to oppose personally. So I don't know how the rest of them feel.
Can you clarify, with this change, we talked about the golden rules within a zoning case. Do those even apply? Are we talking through the use of the property and impacting the neighbors?
The, the golden rules are set by, it was through Kansas Supreme Court case law back in like the late 70s, early 80s. They laid out factors that are the golden rules, because that's the name of the case, that the aim of those factors is when a decision comes in front of a city council or board of county commissioners on a zoning case, they're what you utilize to determine whether a use is reasonable or not for where it's proposed. And so in this case, you would essentially be taken out of the ability to do, to make that determination because it would be by right. There aren't many areas in state law where your ability to make zoning determinations is limited in this way. And I think some of the concern here would be in part, you could have, you have areas in unincorporated Sedgwick County that are actually pretty urban. For example, Crestview Country Club Improvement District is not in the city limits. So in this bill, it would be treated the same way as a property in really sparsely county, sparsely populated county that doesn't have zoning, zoning countywide like Sedgwick County does. Okalon Improvement District, for example, same type of thing. You have a lot of neighborhoods that are just outside of city limits that are residential. And so our zoning, there wouldn't be a zoning decision in those cases, and zoning enforcement wouldn't really be allowed either. So.
This supersede HOA?
That's a good question, Commissioner. Actually, the original version of this bill did have provision that would, that would have superseded that. They removed that. So HOA, which are private restrictions and covenants, so to the extent you live somewhere that has private covenants, those would still be in place. The initial version of this would have sought to override those, which probably raised some legal questions. I think it did during the hearing in front of the House. They talked about that some. And so they, they did make that modification, but as a public zoning matter, it would still impact all of that. And, and I don't know if, if there's any interest. I had put together draft language that you all could consider. Would you want to look at that now? Okay, I'll, I'll distribute it.
Ever since to be in opposition at the.
Yeah, and I would welcome. Yeah, and I would welcome any potential changes to it if that's what you would see. It probably mirrors some of the talking points that I've already mentioned.
What does this do to get in front of Jason?
Not at the moment. There's no hearing at the moment.
Okay, all right.
I think we just, Justin put that together.
Okay. Well, I think we let us, I think let us digest the the language.
Yeah.
And comment back unless.
I think that sounds sufficient.
Let's let us read this. Let the chair read it as well.
Certainly. Okay. The other bill is that Tanya had mentioned is Senate Bill 242. And this particular bill, what it proposes to do is that municipalities, it's not uncommon, it's not super common, but it's not uncommon that municipalities would enter into contingent fee agreements with outside legal counsel to handle certain specialized matters. What this bill proposes to do is that if a municipality would want to enter into such an agreement, and again, a contingency fee arrangement is where you're not paying the attorney an hourly rate, like $200 an hour or something to that effect, you you pay them based on a portion of what they recover for you. So a common instance would be like a collections matter where an attorney, instead of getting paid $200 an hour, they're paid, they get 30% of what they collect or something to that effect. And so these aren't used routinely, but they're used some and and the counties had them before, like other municipalities have too, whether it's, you know, unpaid EMS bills, unpaid personal property taxes. The opioid settlement would be a case where we had a contingency fee agreement with with an outside law firm. This bill would require that if a municipality wanted to do that, they'd have to hold a public hearing on the matter, disclose a multi step process to explain and justify the need for the outside counsel and then take a vote publicly to engage with that outside counsel. That's very different than what we do today. Right now, I'm empowered as your county counselor through Charter Resolution Number 46 as your county counselor and also Charter Resolution Number 68, which is our purchasing resolution to retain outside counsel on your behalf. The proposed bill would also require that the matter would be, if it would be approved by the municipal's governing body, it's sent to the Kansas Attorney General, who would then have 90 days to review the matter and would have the ability to decide whether or not you could hire the outside legal counsel. And I mean, as long as Kansas has been a state, to my knowledge, the Board of County Commissioners and local elected officials tasked with managing the counties had the ability and authority to engage outside legal counsel. Instead, these determinations would be subject to the will of the Kansas Attorney General. As your county council, I just think it's preferable for you all as the governing body to have that power. We don't know what the future may hold, whether it's, I'm not just talking about the Attorney General today. I'm talking about just in the future in general. I think it's best for you to have that power. Also, I have concerns that this bill would put you in the position of potentially needing to waive attorney client privilege in order to retain legal counsel. And you'd be subject to a process that could take four to five months probably to hire legal counsel, which is also not ideal. I will say, I'm not certain the problem this bill is trying to solve, but I think that I suspect it involves an ongoing lawsuit with Ford County. Their county commissioners are pursuing a lawsuit against plastic producers. I understand the Kansas Attorney General's tried to intervene in that. And and I'm not speaking to the merits of that lawsuit, but if the concern is that there's meritless lawsuits being filed, we do have a judicial system that addresses those types of things. So and lastly, I'd point out, these contingent fee agreements can be beneficial to the county and the taxpayers. So they keep you from paying out of pocket costs for litigation on some of these matters where you may not want to have to pay that attorney $200 an hour. And so I think there can be reasons where it is in the best interest of the county and the taxpayers. There's a hearing on this bill in front of the Senate Committee on the Judiciary Monday morning at 10:30, which is obviously too late for us to submit a written opposition and any verbal opposition. I don't know if that's the will of the board or what you'd want to do. This is something where we could talk about other options if there's an interest in the board and potentially opposing us, but just wanted to bring it to your attention. Happy to stand for any questions too.
Well, as explained, I I think we easily would be opposed to it. So I think you've got our nod for that unless somebody disagrees. I I don't know what we can do.
And I don't know, at this point, Commissioner Meister, I've got some proposed potential talking points or for any potential, anything that may be passed along. One one option we could do on this is you could do an email to members of the Senate Committee. If that would be the will of the board, would you like me to pass around kind of some proposed language on that and at least for you all to consider? Okay.
The one on the timeline on that. Generally speaking, it sounds like this is a bill that grows government pretty much.
What's that?
It sounds like this grows government, this does.
Well, it just, it really would put you in the position of I mean, I act on your behalf as your county counselor and you're tasked with managing the county. It would subject that to the determination of the Kansas Attorney General, have it may have very different interests at any point in time than than the Board of County Commissioners in Sedgwick County. So that's my concern. I wanted to convey to you all.
Well, if we'll take a second to glance at this, these are talking points that you would like to express to the committee members, the Senate committee members.
That's that's correct, Commissioner Meister. And again, I think they're pretty similar to what I just said. Be happy to tweak it, take any questions, anything.
But this impacts cities as well, municipalities?
Yeah, it does impact cities the same way. Cities will probably have a I believe the opinion of a lot of attorneys for cities would probably be that their constitutional home rule would prohibit this. There is reference in the written draft testimony I provided here that it impacts our statutory counties have statutory home rule powers. This would impact that. I mean, the statute says those powers shall be liberally construed for the purpose of giving the counties the largest measure of self government. And so I think Commissioner Meister, to your point, this would limit your self government and impose essentially at the state, it would erode your power and hand some of it to the Kansas Attorney General's office.
Well, I think your your memo does summarize, I'm okay with getting this out. Are you okay? I think if they decide to pass it, they could, they could change the name of the bill from no impact to large impact or negative impact. This will be truth in transparency legislation.
Any other questions? I'm sorry, I had.
Just to clarify, I'm actually supportive of the last one you handed out, 242. I think that's good testimony. 2343, I feel like there ought to be discussion by the commission on what is actually is our position because, you know, a lot of us run on the idea of less regulations and more red carpet, less red tape type of philosophy. And I guess I do see that, you know, zoning, you know, is intended to create that balance, but it also does create a lot of a lot of stipulations on what can and cannot be done. And it is arguably a lot of regulation. So to me, I think that we're trying to advocate for less regulation. I think there's a there's merit on the intent of this bill. I'm not sure I agree with exactly what it's trying to do. But I'm not sure I like agree with all the testimony that's been written as it is. So I'd like to do some work on studying the bill and see what is our actual position. I'm not sure I agree with being an opponent flat out or being a component. I think we ought to maybe be a little more thoughtful.
2343.
Yes.
And that's the one that we don't have a deadline on. Okay, so that allows us to. That's the one that I meant to say, no impact, yes.
Understood.
So the other one, though, we're okay with sending out emails to the.
Commissioner, if you want, I can take this email that Jason's drafted and just get this to Jason and he can get that to the main event first, rather than you having sent an email that then comes to tell me from the.
Thanks for the summary on all those.
Thank you.
I think our new commissioners are seeing that during the legislative session, things happen daily, hourly. For sure, daily. So it's our life from January to April usually. Thank you again for all the work on this. Any other comments?
What else?
All we have, sir. Okay, anybody? All right. Well, let's enjoy the nice weather. Happy, happy March 1st tomorrow and we'll move on. See you next week.